All right, welcome everybody. So Lynn sent out for input to our community members.
Thirty one sixty.
Thirty one sixty, which is special services.
Can you go back into the agenda and you'll pull up the survey results? There weren't very many, I think there were five. So first one, yes. And okay, looks good. I like the district will follow state law in identifying providing services to students that have disabilities. And then with the student who needs special services, I just want to highlight how difficult it has been to get my child what she needs. All I ask for is someone at the school for her to check in with to keep her on task and plan homework. This allows me to have more informed on the progress and not just rely on her input. She doesn't necessarily need special accommodations in class, but rather assistance with executive functioning, which seems to be where access to help is lacking the most. So I think it is important to note that this was due to a state audit that we have to, this is not a policy we've ever had. But Idaho as a state from the federal government went through kind of a compliance audit and they found in S L D specific learning disability that students were, we were under identifying and making it a little bit more critical and harder. Instead of, you know, typically it's an over identification, but we were undering and the requirements were a little bit more stringent. So there has been some additional feedback about as a state being more in alignment with what the federal guidelines say. So we could see even some additional changes, not necessarily to this policy, but to the manual and some of those S L D qualifications and criteria.
So based on the input from the five people who provided input, there's probably nothing that we need to actually add to this policy. So that means this one will go to the board at the June board meeting. The next one is seventy four thirty, which is the travel expenses. And so input from parents and staff, as long as someone monitors what's being spent and on what, seems reasonable, more thorough. The description of what is allowed and how to get approved is much better than the current policy. I have no issues with travel allowances and expenses as long as the per diem rate is reasonable and not inflated. Reasonable accommodations doesn't necessarily mean cheapest. Safety and security are important as well. So that doesn't sound like we can make any changes to this one. So this one will also go to the board. And then we have seventy four thirty P, which is the procedure. So things above doesn't appear to have major changes from previous process. Consider county or city based reimbursement for meals as food costs vary considerably.
I think Jessica who did that actually.
I like that each expense or allowance is defined so there are questions about our policy or guidelines. This all seems reasonable and prudent out of that condition. So did she put it in here that the meals?
I don't think she said that. I just think that's where Jessica pulled her information from.
It says that they're going to be determined by us.
But it's per offer deal sheet.
Reimbursement rates will be determined by the superintendent and his or her for his or her visiting and reflected on the reimbursement platform. So that means that we actually are the ones who are going to set that. But it doesn't say anything about looking at where you're going.
We can put that on there just as a reference, that it can be a frame of reference. You can put the comment and then put it in parentheses.
This comment?
Mm-hmm. Consider county based, you can just put consider county based reimbursement for meals. Right there.
You want me to copy this?
You could. Do you want to take off a scoop cost or just put consider county city based reimbursement for meals? Since this is a policy. You guys think that's okay? It's just a frame of reference.
So that one's ready to go.
And then, so then the next step would be, we did send out, it was a couple, now it might have been almost a month and a half ago. We sent out twenty five hundred, twenty five ten. We sent out twenty five twenty, or twenty five ten, twenty five ten P, and I think twenty five twenty. And got feedback and then it did go in front of the board. There was lots of discussion and that's where the conversation about, you know, can we do some temporary, that kind of thing. Trustee Jones did ask for it to be tabled so that we could go back and have, based on some of our librarians' requests of just giving some more guidance from either legal and/or from their library commissioner from the state. And so we did meet with them on Monday and got some additional feedback. So I just wanted us to go through some of the pieces that they got recommendations on. I added those in here and so we just go through it one more time to make sure we're good. Because we have made some changes, not drastic, but some. And I thought we would send this back out for survey, all of them together. So because we have condensed a couple and, you know, so that, and then all five of these, all dealing with library curriculum will go out for survey this next week. And then next Thursday, we'll look at all of those results. And then they'll be on the, if all is well, then they'll be on the June board meeting. Yes, is that accurate? That's what you don't tell?
Is seventy four thirty and seventy four thirty going to?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I put it on the. Does that sound good? Okay, so I added, so the language that the librarians added is in green. And so I just added this in here. There's, it's right here, but we could probably just go through the whole thing and see if there's anything we want to tweak. And then one last review and.
So do you want me to start at the top and we just go through the whole thing? The Lakeland Joint School District recognizes the importance of the school librarian assumes a responsibility for providing the library facilities instructional materials and equipment needed to support the entire curriculum at schools. It shall be the policy of the Lakeland Joint School District Board of Trustees to maintain a comprehensive district-wide school library program. Recognize the instructional and administrative functions of the school librarian and support her leadership role in the administration of the school library and the selection of materials therein. Entrust the school librarian with responsibility for building and maintaining a collection of age-appropriate materials that adhere to district guidelines and policies. Materials will be selected to provide for the interest and needs of the entire school population. Selection will be carried out according to administratively adopted guidelines for the review and selection of library materials. Support collaboration between the school librarians and other librarians in the community for the fullest utilization of all available information resources. Entrust the school librarian to receive and process requests from students, parents, custodians, legal guardians of a student or district resident for review of any library materials provided that the request is submitted by completing a library to review form. This, the material in question will be reviewed by the librarian, principal, and superintendent for determination of its educational value. If the question remains unresolved, the superintendent shall present the findings to the board for final disposition. Entrust the school librarian to receive and process requests from, so we're down here, from students, parents, guardians, or custodians or legal guardians of a student challenging any library materials under Idaho Code eighteen fifteen seventeen B, provided that the request is submitted by completing a library curriculum challenge review form under Idaho Code eighteen fifteen seventeen B. The challenge material will be given to the library review committee within thirty days. The committee will then read and provide a final report to the school board for their final decision. This process will be completed within sixty days of receiving the challenge review form.
What do you guys think about adding the thirty and the sixty that way?
Yeah.
Can we put the committee will then read the book?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, we do have it. The committee will then read and provide a final report.
But it just.
Oh, read the book, yeah.
Just to be clear.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, and so we have to put all of this in red. That actually is replacing this entire paragraph, right?
Yeah, right, right, because.
So do you want to strike this?
So the difference is, the green did not say anything about like physically removed.
Well, so.
We can't physically.
We can't physically remove it. Just making sure, yeah, what the difference is.
Yes, and we took away the, or district residents. Because we don't, it's only if a child receives it, a parent can fill the form out.
It's only if the book is given.
For this, for this specific law. Like anybody, a district resident could come in and have a challenge a book, but it's where the law for this particular law.
For obscene material within the school.
Where the harmful to kids law, it has to be that it was given to a child.
And only their parent can bring it. Okay, so then if it's a district patron that is wanting to challenge a book, that's where it'd be covered under number five. And that's when it goes to the librarian, the principal, the superintendent, not the library.
Kind of distinguish the two.
That's really a lot more clear.
That might just be because I don't believe in magic and magic shouldn't be in schools. So I'm going to challenge this book.
Right.
We would go through that process and take that recommendation to the board. But this is definitely specific to the new law, which is all about harm, obscene materials harmful to children.
And they said we want to be specific about it just to protect our school.
Because the law clearly states that, yeah, it has to be actually, you put in the hands of a child, we're giving it to the child, and then only the parent can bring that forward.
So can you change, take off the brackets in here and then just change that to red? Because any new language is going to be red.
And then that really helps, like alleviate a lot of our concern about how the committee would be so overwhelmed with me.
Exactly. When we heard that, we're like.
Yeah, that's so helpful.
Are there any questions or concerns about this new language from the rest of the committee? Pursuant to state law, the board has the duty and responsibility to equip and maintain a suitable library and shall follow all state laws and administrative rules. School library materials may include, but are not limited to, print, print, sorry, print books, recordings, digital materials, periodicals, newspapers, and equipment, and are provided primarily for use by students and staff. And may be checked out by either, so that should be a period. The individuals who check out books are responsible for the care and timely return of those materials. The librarian may assess fines for damaged or unreturned books.
And that last sentence there, can we put in fines for late, comma, damaged, or unreturned books?
For late?
And a comma after damaged, please.
Late, damaged. Thank you for catching that. Okay.
Points for discuss. We want to leave the points for discussion within the following highlighted. Do you feel like we need to do that, Maria? Because that was at the last board meeting. Should we just leave it in there?
Did you get to that after it was tabled?
I don't think so. I don't think that was even.
Then we'll leave it discussed.
Okay. I couldn't remember.
So district residents or parents slash guardians of students attending the district may be allowed access to library books at the discretion of the building principal. However, such access shall not interfere with regular school use of those books.
So part of the conversation in the previous, you guys tell me if I'm wrong, was so an outside person could come in and want to check out a book. And so just feeling like with all of our safety protocols, that's problematic. Like if they wanted to set up a time to come in after school hours or something, they could get, but there's a public library, but are we allowing people to come in and get a book?
Well, they technically couldn't check it out unless they're a parent.
And one of the things that we talked about was that they have free access to our catalog. Anybody can look through our catalog. If they find something they don't like, they can certainly go over to the public library and check it out. They don't need to come.
So that was, that was part of the discussion.
Yeah, I just don't see what the point is.
Allowing access, again, not that, well, we're not letting, because the law is clear that district residents can have input, but actually getting the book from the library and having access to the school.
And they for sure can fill out a form if they don't like something.
They're allowed to challenge all of that, but it's just in the moment giving them, having somebody come in just to view a book, especially when kids are present. That was some of the discussion.
Any student, parent, custodian, legal guardian of a student or a district resident may challenge the materials within the library by completing a library materials review form and submitting it to the school librarian. The material in question will be reviewed by the library review committee, who will present its recommendation regarding the library material to the book for review and/or approval. Is that not exactly what's all listed?
Yes, it is.
That's what we wrote down. It's still covered in five and six.
Yeah. It's all covered in five and six. Yep, redundant.
It's exactly the same.
Yeah.
So do we, do we re-strike that?
I don't think you need it again, but it just gets a little horrid.
It is basically what's in five and six, because five is about objecting a book and six is about challenging it.
I just, I'm reading it aloud, I immediately felt like I literally just said these words.
And then that's the end of it.
That's the end of that.
Anything that you feel like needs to be added in there that we didn't cover?
My only thing is if, we still have to decide if we're going to do two forms. And if we have two forms, we have two different copy titles to those forms. And that could maybe be however we're going to decide.
Which we did. We put two different forms together, one for objecting to materials and one for the actual challenging it because of the law.
Did you send those to me?
Yes.
I thought I only got one. You should have added them both. We, I added on here just your objecting one.
We created, we created then one for number six as well.
We did.
Did you get the one for number six or the one for number five?
I mean, I have a vote, I'll let you know.
One was called an objection form for school or classroom library materials. The other one was library curriculum challenge review form.
I think I only got the objection one.
I haven't. You want me to share it?
Yeah, I just got this.
All right.
This one, and then I got your copy. That's all I got.
Okay. I just sent the other one.
Okay, so let's go while Lynn updates that. Let's go to twenty five ten, selection of library materials. Okay, the district has libraries in every school with the primary objective of implementing and supporting the educational program in the schools. District libraries provide faculty and students with materials that enrich and support curriculum and meet the needs of the students and faculty served. Provide students with a wide range of educational materials based on age-appropriate content and reading ability, appealing to a wide range of interests in a variety of formats, and supporting the presentation of different points of view. Select materials that present various sides of issues, giving students an opportunity to develop critical thinking skills. Select materials in all formats, including up-to-date, high-quality, varied literature to develop and strengthen a love of reading. The board affirms, that should be a capital T.
On twenty five ten P, right?
Just twenty five ten.
Oh, twenty five ten, gotcha.
The board reaffirms the principle of intellectual freedom inherent in First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States.
No, we didn't, we can change it.
School librarians are entrusted with responsibility for building and maintaining a collection of age-appropriate materials that adhere to district guidelines and policies. The board is responsible for approving all selected materials. The board entrusts the superintendent to oversee the libraries and the selection of library materials. Library materials may include print books, recordings, digital materials, periodicals, newspapers, equip and equipment. This policy and its related procedures shall apply to all types of library materials. The district's libraries shall adhere to district policies and procedures related to copyright. Everybody good with that one? And we have selection of library materials procedure, twenty five ten P. The selection of library materials is a professional task conducted by the library staff. The librarian shall plan the acquisition of new materials as well as maintain the inventory of library materials in collaboration with the building staff. Material requests from students and district families are also considered as part of the ordering process. And then they've got, can we change district families to staff?
We take requests from students and mostly staff.
Staff, we don't take them from families.
Family's going to be calling in, can you please get this book in the library that doesn't?
They don't, they don't do that, no.
If families want to, they can send the request with their students.
Yeah, not a problem.
I mean, it's not like we wouldn't take it, but we, we ask students and staff, we get out for them to give us requests.
Anybody have a question with that?
Well, I would just put staff, not district staff. I would just put students and staff.
Yeah, students and staff. Yep.
Okay, material requests from students and staff are also considered as part of the ordering process. This includes reviewing whether materials should be removed. Can we change as part of the?
To when.
Where did we put that?
Also considered as when, when.
Also considering.
When ordering.
It's not really a part of, it's just when. We do consider when ordering.
And then, and then strike process. So we're going to strike as part of.
As part of the, and just leave when ordering.
Also considered when or.
Right, and just. I would just say when ordering or.
Just, yeah, when ordering.
When ordering.
Or say ordering materials.
Right, yeah, and I'll get the process over.
And then we just need to take off that green.
Okay. In selecting library materials, the librarian will consider whether the materials fill a gap between the existing collection and the requests of students and staff. Are integral to the instructional goals, curricular or extracurricular programs, for independent reading of the students and staff of the school. Are appropriate for the reading level, understanding, and abilities of students in the school. Warrant inclusion in the collection because of literary, historical, or artistic value and merit. Present information that is current and accurate. Provide fair and unbiased presentation of information representing varying viewpoints. Reflect a variety of cultural backgrounds. Represent age-appropriate material within the grade band of each school and exclude obscene material as defined Idaho Code eighteen dash fifteen fourteen. Reading. Reading is removing materials that have been deemed inappropriate or have become obsolete, outdated, or worn out. The librarian of each school shall be responsible for ensuring the library's collection is reviewed regularly. The librarian of each school shall be responsible for ensuring the library's collection is reviewed regularly. Weeded material that is deemed inappropriate shall be disposed of through the inventory disposal process.
And then he said not necessary for all, for deemed inappropriate, because all materials disposed of this way.
And then also.
Be weeded material.
And also be disposed of through the inventory disposal process. Right, and up, up in the top under where it's, where you start with the weeding, where it says weeding is removing materials that have been deemed inappropriate. Well, we don't have anything inappropriate. Do we need to put that in there?
Well, we will if we have a parent who challenges or goes through that challenge process and leave. I feel like we should leave it in there because we have had some inappropriate things and that's been part of our ruling and stuff. And so I think that that's the qualifier of, I mean, there could be some book that we don't, we haven't caught yet that, at high school that we think is, you know.
Yeah.
So we're always looking for that.
So you're saying that we just need, that this qualifier doesn't need to be here because we do this for everything, that's how we do it.
Yes.
So weeded material shall be disposed of through the inventory disposal process.
Yeah. Right, that's how we.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I was just, I was looking up at the other part. I couldn't remember when we had talked on Monday when we were going over stuff or Tuesday.
But that's how, if you guys weed it out, we just, we go through that process, right?
Whether it's deemed inappropriate.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it needed to be in there in that one section, that's all.
Gifts and donations. Gifted materials and donated books may be accepted in accordance with district policies and procedure. The librarian shall evaluate whether a donated item meets the criteria for acceptance and ensure it is added to the collection or discarded accordingly. Gifts and donations will be removed from the collection at the end of their useful life. Any additions, questions, concerns about this one? Draft of twenty five twenty. Selection adoption, adoption use and renewal of curricular materials. Definitions, curriculum is the standards adopted by the State Board of Education that mandate what students are required to learn. Curricular materials are defined as textbooks, core instructional materials, and all resources included with the adoption, including novels and audio video clips. Supplemental materials are any supporting materials used in classroom instruction inclusive of instructional media, including software, audiovisual media, internet resources, and novels, including applications, platforms, documents, or instructional material obtained from sites or the internet. Library materials are any materials used to instruct students. Audiovisual materials that are five minutes long or less fall within the parameters of this policy. Anything longer than five minutes would fall within the parameters of policy twenty five seventy, use of commercially produced video recordings. Curricular materials adoption. The board shall establish a curricular materials adoption committee for the purpose of advising the board on the selection of curricular materials for use within the district. At least half of the committee must be comprised of persons other than public educators and trustees and shall include parents of a child or children attending school within the district. All meetings of the committee shall be held in open session and be duly noticed. Curricular materials adoption committees will be responsible for recommending textbooks and core instructional materials for consideration by the board. The function of the committee is to ensure that materials are selected in accordance with Idaho content standards and establish district goals and objectives. Recommendations will be made and the final decision rests with the board. Any person may submit written objections to any curricular materials under consideration.
Why did we change the language to core instructional materials?
Because this is the curricular materials adoption committee. So that committee really just does the textbooks. And that's by law, it has to be that way. The supplemental curriculum committee is what does the rest of it. Or dual credit.
Should we, should we title curricular materials adoption committee?
Give it a, make it a, actually make it a title.
It's not just bloods in there.
Materials, adoption.
Is it committees or committee?
It's, it's probably more than one because it's usually subject specific. Good question, Mary. For dual credit courses. For dual credit courses offered through institutions of higher education, the selection, adoption and removal of curricular materials is handed by the provider. The district has no control over the selection, adoption and removal of curricular materials and it is the responsibility of the parent to have knowledge of and or review such materials prior to student enrollment. Selection and adoption of curricular. Materials. Adoption.
Committees.
Adoption committee.
It was committees before, it should remain committees this time.
Committees. Will evaluate materials based on a set of selection criteria. The board is legally responsible for approving and for providing the necessary curricular materials used in the district.
Do you wanna put a period? Is there a semi?
After criteria?
Oh, is there something there?
There is. No, there's a period further down the crossed out line, just at the very end.
The board is legally responsible for approving and for providing the necessary curricular materials used in the district. Textbooks and instructional materials shall provide quality learning experiences for students and include the following. Enrich, support, align and enforce accuracy with the curriculum. Stimulate.
Stimulate?
I know, it's just standing there.
Plural with other singular.
So do we want, do we want them to be plural or singular?
Learning experience is for students. Stimulate.
You can do singular.
Yeah. Stimulate growth in knowledge, literary appreciation, aesthetic value and ethical standards. Be congruent with identified instructional objectives. Present varied viewpoints on issues within the content standards. Align with board policies and enacted resolutions. Ensure usability for teachers and students. Provide materials for scaffolding and supports for differentiation. And provide viable assessment tools to support data-driven instructional decisions. Use of curricular materials. Curricular materials shall be made available for student use. Students will not be charged for normal wear. Students will be charged for unreasonable damage, excessive wear and lost materials. The school librarian will maintain records necessary for the proper accounting of all curricular materials. So once this is approved, we need to make sure we add this to our journey with the librarians to make sure that elementary librarians know this change. Because this will be a change for them.
Or for their textbooks.
They don't, they don't.
No, they don't have a tech, they don't have textbook manager.
Well, they still can charge without having textbook manager.
They just don't have the information because it doesn't run through their library. So we're going to need to, we may need to get the textbook manager to be able to do this. Use of supplemental materials. Supplemental materials enhance the coherence of the total curriculum without supplanting the core instructional resources. A teacher may utilize supplemental materials as part of the course of instruction to refer students or refer students to utilize supplemental materials for educational purposes and as part of the education process.
Did we take that highlight before or was that the time where we stopped?
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure what that was in. Supplemental materials approval process. The process of approving supplemental materials is as follows. Teachers submit materials for approval to the assistant superintendent.
Yeah, that's not here.
That's, we, this is new.
Requesting material list is electronically shared with the supplemental. Supplemental materials. Committee.
And that's one committee, correct?
Yeah, to solicit feedback. All feedback is provided to the school board for consideration. The LJSD board trustees approve or denies the request presented. The assistant superintendent will notify the teachers and principals of the result of their request. Two caveats to this process are student-driven activities, materials chosen by students for projects, i.e. speeches, display boards, research topics, et cetera. And teacher-created materials if they are created based only on the board-adopted textbook or curricular materials. All supplemental materials may be preliminarily approved and must adhere to all district policies. The process for this is as follows. The teacher has already submitted the materials to the assistant superintendent for the supplemental materials approval process. The teacher needs access to this material sooner than the next regularly scheduled board meeting to better meet the needs of students. The teacher submits the materials to the building administrator for preliminary approval. If the building, if the principal provides preliminary, preliminary approval, he or she forwards the materials to the superintendent for final approval. The superintendent will notify the teacher, principal and assistant superintendent if the material is preliminarily approved. The material also continues to work through the process of formal approval by the LJSD board. So let's just stop there because we did that at the last meeting. So are there any questions about that? We had talked about it two meetings ago. And so this is what we created, does, does it make sense?
It sounds like what was spoken about two meetings ago.
And my thing would be that, how I'll keep track of that is I have a spreadsheet. So if things are sent to me and I'm gonna just put a little checkbox of this went through, like if it was temporary approval, and then I'll have a checkbox that says final approval. And so I'll be able to keep track of that and mark that off. And final approval, so like temporary approval won't, won't go on my board-approved spreadsheet, but final approval will. So, so that'll notify the board that this was something that we got temporary approval on.
So then, my question is, if, if my principal approves it, then it also needs your approval? And that, those are the two eyes that are seeing it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, and then that takes the onus off of the teacher and puts it on me, basically. Which is where it needs to be. So if anybody's name's gonna be on social media, I prefer that it's mine. So that was why we did that.
Before.
You, I'm looking at your face.
I, I am seeing tens of thousands of pieces of material that are going to be.
Well, this is, this, this really should be used because I just, I just taught a lesson today on, um, uh, being able to put fractions, ratios and proportions on a number line accurately. And my kids are not understanding how to go between those, those versions of numbers. I need, I need some more practice.
Exactly.
Right.
Pre-planned stuff that you wanna do should go through the original supplemental. This is for, I need something on the spot and I can't wait three weeks for it.
But the caveat to that, Mary, is going back now. The caveat was if a teacher creates a worksheet based on the textbook, like I need more practice with this math topic.
It doesn't have.
Then it doesn't go through this because the, the board is allowing teachers to create their own worksheets based on the textbook we're using. This truly is, is, um, one of the examples that, one of the meetings was, I, I taught this and they didn't get it and there's this, there's this three-minute video clip that helps them visualize what I'm trying to get them to understand. And I, and I need them to watch this to help them. That's what's coming. So it's, it's not something you make to help them, it's truly something you want to find. And it has to be, somehow there has to be approval. And I agree, we, we could get innovative.
I'm going to mind.
Yep, if we do, then we may have to have a different conversation about, you know, dividing.
But a lot of stuff should be, because it's gonna be coming from your adopted materials, your approved materials. So my hope is that you're creating things from that and so it's already created.
My difficulty as an ALP teacher is I don't utilize the curricular materials. I, yes, I'm a flex teacher, but I'm, my, my position is.
Right.
Getting the kids to, to use other materials.
So most of your stuff will have to go through the supplemental, yeah.
But hopefully you've pre-planned, you know, when you're planning your lessons or whatever.
Yeah, but there's, there's a lot of spur of the moment. And, and just, you know, things like reading about the prairie in a book and the kids didn't have a concept of it. I can't pull up a picture.
Well, you could pull up a picture of a prairie.
It's going on the internet, it's on the fly, I'm putting it in front of them.
But it's not, that's not personal.
Okay, so, so, okay, so it's.
I, what, where people get, what you, where parents get concerned and we heard it actually in the meeting is when you start putting narrative in there and you don't know for sure what that narrative is until you've actually read through the whole thing. So, um, they just wanna make sure that, that's where we could get ourselves in trouble. So if it's a picture, I don't think anybody.
Video that you haven't watched and.
Right.
There's that commercial or ad or.
Yeah, so that's.
That happens all the time on YouTube.
Ads change all the time.
Yeah, that's not even the worry as much as, you know, you're.
Not trusting us actually watch it all the way through to make sure it's gonna say something.
Well, and sometimes you, you're watching it and maybe you're, you're listening to it, but you're also working on your lesson plans and you miss, you're not looking at it, you're listening and you miss a picture, you know, but it just, it's just a protection for you to make sure that you're not gonna get yourself in trouble.
I'm glad that the caveat is in there for student-generated things. You know, my kids do a lot of presentations of research they've done. They stand up and they show the kids what they've created and, um, and things like that. So, and, and the kids do generate. I do a lot of just make it. It's, it works better with my kiddos.
Yeah.
In connection to that previous one that we have, if you scroll up just a little bit, the one that we were talking about right there. I wonder if you should be for, it says all supplemental materials, maybe if you should say in response to immediate teacher need, supplementary materials may be preliminary approved. Because otherwise, somebody else is gonna look at that and be like, oh, I can just skip and go through this process.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Yeah.
I like that. But is it teacher need or student?
It's, 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 it's response to students.
Can I do teacher slash student?
Yeah, that would, that would work.
Teacher identified student.
And then I also thought, just one more thing of clarity, if you go up again, two more lines where it says teacher-created materials.
Right there.
Right, where it says and teacher-created materials, right, and right after the parentheses. I wonder if you should set, have our LJSD teacher-created materials? Because if I'm going, I'm a teacher-made teachers, teachers created it.
Yep.
And that just keeps it specific.
Well, that's perfect. But, okay, just caveat to that, everybody know what LJSD, should we just spell out Lakeland School District?
There you go.
We use LJSD throughout the policy.
I mean, I just asked.
Maybe this was spoken of last week.
Maybe it would be, I mean, it's one of those things, if you use it too often, you're too deep.
Well, we have it up there.
Some people forget what it's, what it is. So it's good to toss it in there every now and then.
Every now and then, yeah. Can I just say Lakeland teacher-made materials? Lakeland teacher?
Sure, sure.
What are we doing about that?
Say Lakeland S. Lakeland joint, write out Lakeland Joint School and just put JSD. Would that be too weird?
That would be weird.
Now we're throwing different.
Okay.
We don't ever do that anywhere, yeah.
What would, um, what was the process or what, I guess what was the decision? Maybe I'm just forgetting about all the products that we spoke of and all the things that we have that have not been.
I'm actually at the board meeting next Wednesday, we're gonna talk about that.
Because that's where it comes down to, more than tens of thousands.
That's where I think it will be important that we send this out for survey. There will be a board meeting, Lisa's gonna get some clarification from the board and then that next day we'll come back and have more discussion of policy.
One of our high school print teachers at the last meeting brought.
All those things.
Uh, bring papers for one semester of one class that she teaches at a high school level.
Yeah.
Which is nothing compared to what our elementary we have, right?
And that's where I'm thinking, I mean, and on your end, it's a lot of work to sift through it and present it to the board, but at the same time, it's like just my end of sending it to you because it's games, it's so many things we've created. It's like I'm trying to bring boxes to the district office to have, it doesn't make any sense. And then I'm also not able to use all of those things the whole time. It's not, everything's electronic, a lot of it is, but there's so many things that we're using that are not electronic, that'd just be totes of things, so that doesn't make any sense to me.
But anything that we created years and years ago that was based on whatever that adoption was at that time, so Cogan Mifflin during, in the late nineties, early two thousands, Scott Worsman, any of those, um, we wouldn't have to bring.
It kinda goes back to, everything, all the materials we have are meeting this, are teaching the standards. So if our curriculum that we're adopting is meeting, is helping kids meet the standards, there's going to, to me, I'm thinking, well, every single thing is, it might not have the exact same spelling list that the Germans had.
It's derived from an adoption.
Exactly, so it's like everything almost is already covered with not just being with the curriculum materials, it's from the curriculum that's standard.
And that's why that caveat is there. So if, and, and Michelle agreed with that when we were here a few weeks ago, when she was here last, that if you're making something from a board-approved curriculum, then that's automatically approved. It's when we go outside of that.
Entering.
Yep. So I would be, I would just, as you're going through your things that you are using, I would look at it through that lens and only the things that are outside of one of our adoptions since you've been hired would be the things that we would bring.
Question, I teach yearbook. I use the curriculum that's provided from the yearbook company that we, so I need to submit all of that curriculum? Cause like, we have a contract with that company.
Does Ashley provide your curriculum to teach the kids?
Yeah. Curriculum and videos?
If you, and I don't know, and maybe the board, maybe, kind of what we talked about, like maybe having a workshop sort of thing and helping, just more of a realistic approach. I don't know if they realize, a lot of teachers in Lakeland are creating their own materials, but there's so many that aren't because there's other educators in nation that have created this and so it kinda goes back to that as well. Like, they wanna see every single thing that's ever been created by another educator that meets the standards.
If it's not based on our, our textbook and our curriculum, yeah?
Even if it's meeting the standards, if it's not specifically saying this is from lesson eighteen of week four from.
It doesn't have to say that, but if you.
Or, but I would have to prove that. So then it's a lot of work to go through and say, where does this, but I know it meets the standard. I mean, you know, I'm, I'm trying to give an example.
You should know when you're looking at your things, what you made and what you got.
Oh, I have made very few things because I'm.
You steal.
Yeah, work smarter, not harder. Like if somebody's already created it and they're making money, then I'm sure. And that's not, that's almost everybody I know.
That's why Beth is suggesting that we put this here because that was the conversation when Michelle was here, was that it has to be Lakeland materials.
And there would be a lot of survey, I mean, if, if, yeah, I think that's a huge piece of it.
What I'm gonna ask the board, Wednesday night, is, because initially when we started talking about supplemental curriculum in twenty-twenty-one, initially, the board said, everything that has, we've been using to this point, we're, we're, is good. We're not bringing all of that stuff forward. From this point forward, we're going through this process. So my, my request of the board is going to be all of these worksheets that teachers have used for decades. Can we do the same thing with those? And then anything new from this point forward that we didn't create would come to the board? Because I don't, there's just no possible way, when you think of three hundred classroom teachers and.
Everything that is.
Literally, if, yeah, I have a whole filing cabinet in my classroom.
I'm just thinking my file cabinet right now, it's like.
Yeah, times by month. It's such an inconvenience and it's not just that, it's just so, yeah.
It would be, we, we would overwhelm the system.
It's such a micromanaging piece, it's a huge problem. There'll be so much, so much that feedback of how frustrating this is.
And, and Lisa, is it that the board, the district must know or wants to know exactly what's being used at all times? Is, is, is it a state?
It's, the state statute says that the board is responsible for approving all curriculum. And when ISBA came in and did a board training with, with our board, the board asked the question. And when ISBA came in and did a board training with, with our board, the board asked the question, when it, when the state statute says that, are we talking just like the big curriculum adoptions? And the response from the trainer was, no, anything that goes in front of students for instruction is curriculum and you have a duty to make sure that it's approved. That's where that came from, um, and if you talk to the board members, they will tell you that the, the purpose in doing this is so that if somebody's upset about something we're using and it's been approved by the board, then the upset parent needs to be upset with the board and not the teacher. That's the why behind it for our board, but the direction did come to them from ISBA.
So would that include the Filmora, um, software that the Hock News uses? They don't, there's no curriculum to it or anything, it's just software they use for editing and all of that, we don't need to worry about that, okay.
That's not really curriculum. Um, use of novel set protocol, in the fall, ELA teachers, K twelve, will send home a syllabus outlining the novels that may be used during the course of the school year. And this is specific to novels, so kindergarten teachers, if you're going to read a novel, do a read aloud for a novel, that novel you would send home. Parents will sign the syllabus to off their students and for the use of the novels listed, if during the course of the school year, the teacher chooses to add a different novel, permission slips will be sent home to parents.
So all primary teachers, if, I just, yeah, realistically, I'm not, I don't know what novels I'm going to be reading for read alouds, I mean, I don't get to any novels, I'm only doing picture books, but multiple years, I do choose novels.
One of the, one of the things that we're working, one of the things we're working on is, um, I talked to the principals on Wednesday, I gave them two apps that you can put on your phone. You can scan the ISB in your classroom library, so you could have a parent volunteer do this for you. And it, it sends the title and the author of the book to a list and it creates this list for you, which you can then, uh, share with Lynn and me before you leave. And, um, we will work this summer to get all of those books through, um, the approval process to the board. So that we have a district-wide, these are approved classroom library books and it's gonna take us a while to get, obviously, the entire district done, but we'll work as quickly as we can. Um, because then you don't have to go through this process because now it's an approved supplemental material that you can use.
And if I purchase a book throughout, multiple books, a whole series of novels to read aloud to kindergarten throughout the year, I have to send home a permission slip and then also manage the permission slips and then reach out to every parent who didn't return the permission slip? To see if they approve me to read about a dog and her, its owner being a detective, it's just so ridiculous.
This is specific, Amanda, to use of novel sets, so you are, you're teaching your reading standards?
Not a novel, okay, only novel set.
Through a novel set.
This would be a read aloud novel in primary grades, which would be different.
Right, which is going to be, um, which we're gonna get all of those approved so that then they become part of the approved curriculum and we don't have to worry about it.
If it's a read aloud.
Get all their books approved that they read in the library?
Oh.
That you're reading aloud? In the elementarys?
Yeah, cause.
Yes.
Everything are read aloud.
So they need to plan that and they need to get those all approved or.
But if it's, but I thought it was only, you only needed permission if it was going to be a learn, if they were going to be learning something from it. Going to the library and have a book read to you is not, fall under curriculum, it, it's, it's not teaching the kids anything, they're not, they're not doing a character study, they're not doing, they're not doing anything. So why would just having a lib, uh, your kindergarten class come to the library and have the librarian read a book to them, why should that have to fall under, and why does the librarian, why do you have to have all those books approved? Because they're going to be choosing different books for every different grade level, they have, they come every week. That's a lot of books to get approved and that's basically, you're just pulling it from the library, which those books have already been.
And based on interest, based on group, and so permission slip adding, asking before I read.
So one of the things librarians are gonna have to pay attention to is the, the genre-ification, cause if you have a kiddo in that library group who can't read a certain, you're, you're going to have to pick outside of that, so.
And that's understandable, I, I get that because I'm gonna be having a sixth grade group again this year and they, my principal just wants it run like elementary, she wants the kids to come in and read. But I have Tales of Fourth Grade Nothing that my previous kids have all enjoyed, and so I read a chapter a week because it's ten chapters, it works perfectly for the quarter. But it's a humor book and so far I haven't had anybody tell me they can't read humor.
I, I have.
You had somebody say you can read humor?
Yeah.
Oh my gosh.
I have parents say no humor.
Okay, so this is, is again specific to teaching ELA standards from a novel set.
Okay, but I guess I have just a logistic or just a narrative question, nowhere in there does it say, like, if I was reading this, I wouldn't know, I would assume that it's an approved book or a not-approved book, that regardless of the approval process, I have to send this home for parent permission.
So you just, but what you said to them was, well, if it's been approved, you don't have to go through this, the way this reads is they go through that no matter what. The, the difference, well, the difference is, is.
I know.
We're talking about light, classroom libraries, access for kids to sit down and read a book, we're, we're gonna have district-approved books, that's the intent of that. If you're going to do a read aloud, kind of what Janelle's talking about, and you're not, it's not instructional, if you're still using your classroom library books, those are all still approved. This, even if this is approved, because we don't have the genre-ification that, that these guys have, parents get to say, yeah, it's a little too mature for my kiddo, um, I'm not super.
Right, so any novel set that you're gonna use is instructional, has to be approved and also has to get parent permission. I don't, I didn't feel like that was originally clear.
So do you want me to put use of, I can put, uh, use of board-approved novel sets.
But it's like, if I'm reading from a novel during snack time, that's fine, because it's not instructional, it's just to keep their little heads busy while they're snacking, that's fine.
Why would it be when we can't even show a video?
Well, no good.
I mean, seriously, if you're thinking about it that way.
That's why we're trying, that's why, well, one, we're gonna start bringing all of our novel sets through, so if you're using a novel from a novel set, it'll get board-approved.
Okay.
That's why we're also trying to get all of your classroom library books approved, so if you're just pulling something off of a shelf.
Right.
Then you can.
It should be good to go.
Yes.
Okay.
We're, yeah, we're trying to get the, all, we're just trying to get all the titles out there, if they approve.
So, the approval process, is there a form or you have a list? I know that, um, our principal sent out, you know, we need the titles of books that you plan on using, that was kind of a preliminary thing, I think it's gone beyond that, um, for my classroom library. I've been at it a long time.
I know, Mary, but when you think about, because, because you've been at it for a long time, most of your books were pre-two thousand twenty. Prior to two thousand twenty, we didn't have all of this stuff that we had to worry about, so it should be fairly easy for us to go through and say, you know, Clifford the Big Red Dog, probably an okay book to have in a kindergarten classroom.
But that's still so much on our end.
And so I'm, I'm, one, literally asking from me then, as a teacher, I have hundreds of personally purchased, given whatever books. How do I present all those titles to?
That's why, that's what I'm saying.
I'm having to, I will still have to scan.
Hundreds of books is such a time-consuming, it's so time-consuming.
So what I hear, so we had, this is way outside of this, but we had, um, a twin-lay-sell-in entry teacher who tried it in, um.
So you're gonna have to create.
Two periods, she got through three hundred books, so it's about twenty books a minute. Um, it goes fast, if you have a parent volunteer, um, Jerry McDever, the twin, had a parent volunteer do it, it, it took a day and a half for her to get it done, but her entire library is done. So I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, that it falls on you guys, but to protect the teachers and classroom library books absolutely fall under the library, we have to get those books approved. So we're trying to find a way to do it without you having to sit down and write all those titles out.
And are we talking just novels or are we talking content? I mean, I have a lot of science books, I have a lot of.
All of your books.
Books of maps, I mean, maps?
Fiction and non-fiction, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I know it's overwhelming and I don't know how to make it any easier.
But Melanie, I mean, brings up a really good point, so Amanda can scan all of that and there's a list, but then I will have to manually go in and add links to that, all those lists to put them in the supplemental, cause how else do people view it? That's a full-time job right there.
Yeah. And how does this work?
How are you books throughout the year? Colate that so that I may have dozens of books that someone else has.
I, we can put them all, we can put them all in a.
Can you mash all that?
We can put them all into one big Excel spreadsheet and then sort them and you'll get them all bunched up and then we just delete all but one.
Kind of going back to the syllabus piece, which doesn't affect primaries, kids or, um, teachers, but thinking, it kind of what ended up happening recently, if parent, teachers are constantly reading the pulse of their group and changing plans, using their best professional judgment throughout the year. And so if in September, they didn't include multiple things they are going to teach that are meeting standards.
Just do this right here.
So just send out a permission slip every single time they wanna change their plans, basically, and read something new, and then manage the permission slips and then track those down.
So I know you're making it sound like it's a really hard thing, but our sixth through twelfth grade teachers, well, our seventh through twelfth grade teachers have been doing this process since my second year at the district office, so that would be nine years. And what they do is they, they don't just say, oh, I think I'm just gonna use these three books, they'll list, we may over the course of this year, use any one of these books. And some of them put all of the books that are available at that grade level. And then the parents, um, sign the permission slip. So I would tell you that at the intermediate level in, at an elementary school, I would do the same thing. If I have thirteen books to choose from over the course of the year, I'd list all thirteen titles.
That's what Mr. Carr.
That's what our teachers do.
Listen, just follow their books.
Yep.
And then you don't have to, um, then you don't have to, to do this part. And as long as the parents all say yes, and you'll, you may get, um, a parent or two that says, uh, I don't, I'm not sure about this book. And I would recommend at that point, if you have a parent or two who both are saying, I don't, I'm not sure about this book, I would just not do that book that year, so that you're not keeping kids from the learning opportunity, but, um, it doesn't have to be really time-intensive for teachers. Okay, use of video clips, five minutes or shorter, is anything over, what did we say up there, was it over five minutes? Um, we use the, the movie policy. In the fall, K twelve teachers will send home syllabus outlining the video clips that may be used during the course of the school year to enhance student understanding concepts.
I know.
Um, parents will sign the syllabus off their students in for the use of the videos listed, if during the course of the school year, the teacher chooses to add another video clip, notification will be sent via email across Dojo, so parents can look at the video and say, yeah, that's good.
Okay, this is so, um, this is so.
It's still.
This is a huge problem, and then throughout the year, we're constantly finding new materials, new books, whether they're just published or whether they're just new to our entire district list, the videos are saying they're being created throughout the school year.
So then you go back to that immediate need part of this policy where you say, hey, I found this, it's really gonna help me get temporary preliminary approval and I'll send it through the supplemental approval process. I know it's.
That's overwhelming because they only need it for one time and then they don't ever need it again, and yet you're wasting people's time looking at all of this stuff. Uh, it's just.
Our time should be spent on students.
Exactly.
This is ridiculous.
I mean, I, I get it, but this is.
I get it, but I don't, and, and if we go back to.
Yeah, it's too micromanaging.
If you go back to the, the key word that we changed within the library was entrust the library, entrust the library, entrust the library.
Entrust the teachers.
Entrust the teachers.
Again, I, the board was told that they have to approve everything, so that's where we are. I can't, I can't, I can't change that, so this is gonna go out for survey, obviously the staff is gonna have a lot to say.
Yes.
We will come back and comb through all of those responses and want to figure out why we do that.
Just go on record again, and I have said this a couple of times now, I don't wanna overwhelm the board with a lot of people, but I, I think being able to hear in context, the passion where people are with this. I think having a board workshop specific to all of these policies would be helpful and we can be selective, so there's a few people, a couple of primary teachers, a couple of intermediate, a couple of middle school, a couple of high school, like, so, you know, just cause at each grade band, it's a different perspective. I just think having all five board members here, it's not the same, it's different than when this gets reported to them versus them getting to hear where the teachers are and the legitimate concerns that they have. And I've said this before, and so I'm just gonna say it again, I think a workshop would be helpful and we can just ask, um, I think having maybe a principal or two present, a couple of librarians present, I just, I, I think, I think the board needs, needs to hear the concerns. And I think all five of them should hear, it's not, if you haven't been here, and you know, we've been doing these policies, this particular one for several months now. And I think the reason why this has taken so long is because it's, there's just, you know, there's so much input, we, we have had quite a few parents here, um, over the course of the last few months, I just, this is a really big one and it's really important.
Well, and it gets to the heart of what you do every day with kids, and that, that was, I feel like that was definitely, that input was provided to Michelle in, in a pretty strong way, just, we don't just turn a page in a textbook when we teach kids, we actually teach kids, we're not teaching the textbook. And sometimes the textbook, the, well, there, it's not sometimes, no textbook is perfect, no textbook has everything we have, we have to supplement. And, um, what, what we have done is kind of tie the hands of teachers to be able to meet the needs of the kids, so I feel like she heard that. Now, she was not here when we added any of this last time, neither was Ramona, so none of that is anything that any, well, Dave was here, the, any of the other board members had seen, so, um.
So next, staying in your request to the board, can you, um, just present the idea of having a workshop around these policies?
I think that really needs to happen.
Like face-to-face conversations.
You know, the, the group has been core, there's different people in and out, but, um, like you said, this is, we've been at this particular one for well over a month. And there's just.
We keep coming back to the same, the same stumbling blocks.
Yeah, I, I don't think we can do anything to present it.
I think it's fair to, um, you know, Michelle or Dave, cause he was here a lot, it's just, it's, it's really hard for them, they can't rep, they can't speak for the whole board. And so, you know, I, I think she, well, she's, she has tried to kind of encapsulate everything that everybody has said, but there's just been so much, so that's even a hard place, cause she, I, I think she recognizes and understands where people are sitting. And so it, it's a monumental task for her to even try to articulate all the concerns, and so.
Well, and she actually did a good job of restating the concerns that she heard, but she's not doing it from a personal, like a first-person point of view, where this is my life, I'm living every day in my classroom with my kids, and this is how this is impacting.
I think she definitely understands it and I, I do think she did a great job of trying to articulate it, but I just, it, there's so much in the weeds that I feel like it's being the first person, a first person, sitting and watching it is so much more important than it being a third-party response to it, so.
Okay, so, um, this is the last little part of it, we can go through this, just see if there's anything else in here that you don't, uh, that we need to tweak. But then, I, I do think we could send all the library policies off because those are pretty well dialed in, I think it's the supplemental.
Yeah.
It's the supplemental and instructional that we're struggling with.
So it's this one and it's the form?
And the supplemental, we're including classroom libraries and we're including just librarians doing read-alouts to their students during the week, that's what, that's all, okay.
Yeah, and that would be part of that workshop.
Okay.
If, um, if the board agrees to doing it, um, so removal, curricular materials may be removed when the material A no longer meets the criteria for initial. Um, so remove all curricular materials which may be removed when the material A, no longer meets the criteria for initial selection. B is worn out, or C has been challenged through completing a learning materials review and reconsideration form. Um, individuals objecting to specific materials used in the district are encouraged to submit a complaint in writing and discuss the complaint with the building principal prior to pursuing a formal complaint pursuant to review and reconsideration of supplemental materials form. The Lakeland Joint School District shall have on hand and available to the public the titles, authors, and publishers of all curricular materials being used in the district. The public has the right to inspect the instructional materials except students' tests used in district schools. That's the end of it. Okay. And we do have all, a copy of all of our textbooks here for our parents to look at. Our patrons.
So then when I hear what we're saying is twenty-five hundred, twenty-five-ten, twenty-five P will go out for survey. But we want to hold off on twenty-five-twenty and twenty-five-twenty-F until you have a chance to talk to the board about a potential workshop?
Okay, so here's the form.
On there, I linked in the ones of the, both of the librarians created as well.
Okay. The trustees of Lakeland Joint School District have established a formal process for eligible parties who wish to submit a supplemental material reconsideration. For the purposes of this process, supplemental materials include approved curriculum, uh, material used in classroom instruction, library materials, and any materials to which a teacher might refer a student as part of the course instruction. This form is required when making a formal complaint. It will then be turned over to the supplemental materials review committee. Before submitting this form, please discuss the resource with the librarian in the case of a library resource or the teacher in the case of a classroom resource. Please review policy twenty-five-twenty before submitting a complaint. If you object to your child using a particular supplemental material in the classroom, policy twenty-four-twenty-five, written rights, provides a way to request an alternative resource for your child. And here's the information, please check. Um, the formatting is weird, looks like we'll have to fix that. Parent, guardian, or relative of district student, and then current student, district employee, district resident.
I forget why, like parent or guardian doesn't cover everything.
Because sometimes a, a student spends a lot of time with grandma and grandpa during the day as childcare and they might be concerned about something. What did you say?
Well, that's why I'm confused. If it's parent or guardian, wouldn't any relative, if they had legal guardianship, would that be covered by that?
But this is not specific to guardianship. So if you have a first grader and grandma picks the first grader up from school and provides childcare, they're all dead and working, so they go home.
And they have an issue with this?
They have, they see something, they, the committee felt like they should be able to at least bring it to people's attention. So that's why that's there.
It seems like it's just opening up for more, I don't know. To me, it seems like it just would be relative, then the relative would speak with the parent and say, oh, this is a concern I have and this is your child, this is, I don't know. It just seems like if it's not a legal guardianship piece.
But this piece is not, so the other part of the law, the thirty-three, eighteen-seventeen or fifteen-seventeen, whatever that number is, um, has to be the parent, but this one is actually open to district residents also. So it's not, it's not just.
Wouldn't those people fall into district resident?
Not as current as it would fall. Yeah, I don't know, that's just, that's just, uh, that was the discussion at the last meeting. Please check each of the, I can cross that out if you don't want it. I mean, that's why we're going through this again.
Yeah, it just seems like it's just another addition.
It's the checks and balances, where usually you would go to the parent, so that checks and balances just.
Well, grandma definitely can complain, but the parent should do it.
The parent should bring it forward.
Yeah.
Or the guardian should bring it forward.
And maybe the parent has no issue with it, so then the babysitter. Yeah, I don't know, you know what I mean, I just, I don't know.
Okay.
Just open it up to everybody.
Um, please check.
A little bit concerned about Throba as well.
Please check each of the following that apply. The material was used as part of classroom instruction or was available for checkout in the library. Um, please check the applicable box to help us identify the resource. Um, what brought it to your attention? Have you examined the entire resource, not what sections did you review? This material is used in the classroom, were you providing an alternative instructional resource? And why do you believe this resource should be removed from use in the classroom slash removed from the school library? Are these resources you suggest to provide additional information, are, are there? Resources you suggest to provide additional information and our viewpoints on this topic? And then what action are you asking for? So that's one version of the form.
And SBA's. Then, so the bottom, you have the objection, right, those are the two.
Yeah. That's the, that's the, just the objection one for a library or a classroom materials. Okay, so if you wish to object to a library or learning materials used in a school library or classroom, please complete and submit this form to the school's library. This identification must indicate that you are a resident of the LJ.
Oh, not Janelle, no.
I thought I had a nice part.
Well, this is a new acronym.
And need the review requirements. All requests for objections to school library materials originate at the school level. Should the complainant not agree with the local school committees? Do we actually have a committee?
We have, we're supposed to, we have that library review committee.
But this is the local school committee. Do you have a committee at your school?
No, you're right, it should be the library review committee.
But this is if they don't agree with the decision at the school level. So not agree with the local school's decision?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The local school's decision is decided by ultimately the.
The principal and the, and the library.
Yeah.
Um, they may appeal at the district level. Questions about this process should be directed to the school librarian or principal. This form must be used by a parent or resident of the LJ SD in conjunction with the district policies and procedures to submit an objection to the school board for the following materials. Is this related to the obscene, is this the one that's related?
Does it be just anybody wants to object to something?
Parent or resident, okay.
Right, which is why we used the word objection, we didn't use challenge, okay?
Materials used in a school classroom or library is defined in policy twenty-five-twenty.
So break that link though because, um, we won't have, if all of these get approved, it will be.
Whatever the new one is.
The new one, yeah.
Um, section one, parent or school district resident information. Check the box, give us your information. And then the information regarding the material, so the title, the option, the grade level. Uh, where is the material located? What is it? The school, where the material is found? And then some of the same questions.
Well, we like the, did you read the material in its entirety? Because a lot of times they just hear something and then they object to it. And if not, that's fine, but what section did you read? We would like to know the specifics because it's really hard when they just, we've been getting a lot of complaints lately. And I'm like, well, specifically, what did you see? Cause I can't find anything that you're talking about.
What page was it on? What was said, we haven't been able to find anything.
Yeah, so this is perfect, identify the portion of the material objected to and why. Please be specific and provide page number and sections. You may attach additional information better that does not fit within the section. Is there any age or grade you would recommend this material? And if yes, please specify, is there any value in this material? If this material was used in a classroom where you provided an alternate instructional resource, then what is your desire to? So.
I mean, we can play.
I like that one.
I like that one. And then this is the one that's attached to the new law.
Pretty much the same thing, but we just made it for the new law.
Yeah, for the obscene materials, which is fifteen-fourteen, and for the school, which is fifteen-seventeen-B.
Right, and so this form must be used by a parent or guardian of a minor Lakeland School District student who obtained the material violating this.
Lakeland Joint School District.
I know it's Lakeland Joint, I don't know. I was tired.
I don't know anything else. I know either then, so. It's okay, you guys can go back and add that.
Okay.
You can't break that link on there either, then we saw.
No. Um, and then all of this information is the same?
It's basically a.
Yeah, except we.
Because specifically, yeah.
What violates per that Idaho code.
And I don't know if we actually need to write that whole section out, or if you would just.
Link it in there.
I think, if they're gonna take the time to do this, I mean, it's right there, you can just read it.
Yeah. I like those, these two forms better.
Yeah, I do too.
It says it's helpful for us to get more information of what they found so concerning, instead of just objecting to the book.
Then we have to, so then we have to go back and name this, so go back, go back to our agenda. So then it's, so one of them would be twenty-five-twenty-F one, and the other one would be twenty-five-twenty-F two. And we'd have to name it that way.
I don't know if it's gonna bother you with it, it's not?
Yeah. Okay, but where I just put tabled until May twenty-ninth, board meeting for more direction, yes? Okay, so I'll send out the other three and then these two will wait on and then get more direction. Or should I hold off and send them all out at the same time, just hold off on the other three?
We're shaded blue.
I don't know.
No.
Isn't the top one?
No, it's too dark. Okay, we'll fix it.
Yeah. So am I sending out the three, twenty-five-hundred, twenty-five?
Ten, twenty-five-ten.
Um, out, or do you want me to wait and do all five at the same time?
What about N's form?
Only all twenty, you can't send out twenty-five-F and not send out twenty-five-twenty, so.
We're not ready to do twenty-five-twenty, right?
You said to table it. Unless I send out all five.
I was thinking twenty-five-twenty-F two, it was, it's not specific to library books, so it's just all material.
So I can hold off and then we go till May twenty-ninth, talk to the board and then send all five of these at the same time to the library and the curriculum, or I can send the library out?
I would just send the library.
I would send the library out, it seems to be.
Which is what I put, so twenty-five-hundred, twenty-five-ten, twenty-five-twenty-P. Or twenty-five-ten-P will go out for survey and then the other twenty-five-twenty and twenty-five-twenty-F one and two will wait for more direction from the board. Are you guys okay with that?
Now, this form, the twenty-five, the form, twenty-five-thirty-F, that's part of the instructional, right?
Yeah, we just made, we just said F one and two.
There isn't a twenty-five-thirty anymore.
It was combined.
Okay, it's just labeled here as that.
Yeah. Everything's now twenty-five-twenty, they took twenty-five-thirty, twenty-five-fourty, twenty-five-twenty and made it twenty-five-twenty, right?
Okay, this is, okay, gotcha.
Great. Anything else before we adjourn?
Just breathe, that's all we can do.
Breathe.